Start with the roll call.
Aldo is not present, Aldo Abas?
Present.
Aldo Abas is present, Aldo Harrington McKinney?
Oops, excuse me.
She's present?
I am present, yeah.
Yeah, Aldo Skidmore? Aldo Hennig? Aldo Tierney?
Here.
Aldo Tierney is present, Aldo Campbell?
Yeah.
Aldo Campbell is present, Aldo Bedar?
Here.
Aldo Bedar is present.
Thank you, so we have got them, right?
Yeah, yes, we're only missing Skidmore, Hennig, and Carter.
And Carter, thank you very much. Stefan, could you, our IT staff, can you please go through the guidelines?
Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members and city staff, members, if you're able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you're able, please activate your video when you're speaking. The chair clerk and tech facilitator are responsible, nope. You are responsible for muting yourselves in this meeting. Please use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. During any roll call, members will be unmuted briefly. Staff, please use the raise hand feature when you'd like to, or when you're asked a question. The chair will do their best to call on members in the order in which hands are raised. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. Vice President Abas, the floor is back to you.
Thank you very much, Stefan. Thanks for the announcement. I can see Aldo Bedar, your raised hand is raised.
Yes, thank you, Vice President Abas. I just wanted to let you know that I do have to leave at 5:00 PM. I had indicated that to Aldo Carter.
Thank you very much. Aldo Carter is here, so I will give floor.
Thank you, and also Aldo Skidmore might be late or might not be able to attend at all. I just wanted to make those two announcements before we go any further. Thank you. Okay. I take it you did all the disclosures and recusals and public comment, correct?
No, we just started with the roll call and we have to go on approval of minutes now.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second? Second from Aldo Hennig? If there are no... If everyone can consent, then I would like to record a unanimous vote, but if anyone's opposed, please raise your hand. At this time, I will record a unanimous vote approval of the minutes. Thank you. Do we have anyone for public comment?
We have a registrant for item seven, who the supports or does not support but wants to speak. And we have a registrant for item fifteen.
For item fifteen?
Yes, and support but does not want to speak.
We also have a registrant for item number three, public comment.
Okay.
Okay, well, let's go with those public comments, the people who want to speak.
Okay, so we have Dave Jerry wishing to speak. Dave, you should be unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I don't know if this is in the correct order, because it was hard for me to understand the agenda or the minutes. I'm the owner of the Princeton Health Clubs, and I want to know if this is the correct time to discuss this idea that they're talking about trying to buy the building next to the East Side Princeton Club to build the homeless shelter for men.
I believe that is on the Common Council's agenda, which starts at 6:30. I'm just looking real quickly.
Okay.
So Dave, oh, go ahead, Aldo Bedar.
Thank you, President Carter. It is on the agenda for introduction, which means that we can, we will not be taking comments today.
Thank you, Aldo Bedar. Yeah, so I believe that... I believe, Dave, that you can, I believe it's going to go to the Finance Committee, where you can make your comments, but it's just on introduction today.
Okay.
So, Pwazi, do you have that date that it goes to Finance?
Uh, I don't, but I believe Laura Larson is on, right? She's able to get, she has something to say?
President Carter, that will be on our agenda on the 26th, so on Monday evening at 4:30.
Dave, did you get that?
The 26th, 4:30?
Yeah, at 4:30.
And that's Common Council, President Carter?
That's, that is the Finance Committee meeting, and you'll be able to make your comments.
Okay. Very good.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Have a good evening.
You too. Bye bye.
And the next person, thank you, Aldo Bedar.
The next person was for item seven. I'm not sure if you want to wait till...
Yeah, we can wait. Thank you. Any disclosures or recusals by anyone? Okay, we'll move on to item five, Legisstar 62621, and is Sarah, hi, Sarah.
Hello.
The floor is yours.
Okay, can I share my screen? I'm just going to do a real quick presentation.
You sure can, Stefan. Can you help her do that?
Looks like I've got it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, as the city is continuing to grow and adapt our virtual meeting processes, we've identified the need for Zoom accounts designated specifically to virtual neighborhood meetings. We are addressing gaps in the licensing that were identified as we moved to a Zoom enterprise model, and one of these gaps that we identified was the lack of licenses that could be used for supporting Alders and city staff in neighborhood meetings. Some agencies had available funds to purchase licenses to facilitate neighborhood meetings, and some agencies did not have available funds. So we wanted to address this issue, and so we purchased two enterprise license just for staff to use while they're supporting the Common Council and neighborhood meetings. So what are these accounts? These accounts are only intended to be used for city business. Anything not sponsored by the City of Madison, for example, a Neighborhood Association meeting or a nonprofit organization meeting, should not be facilitated using these accounts. Examples of neighborhood meetings that could be used would be that of a development project or a neighborhood meeting on traffic safety issues. So this is the meeting process. We have a webpage up on how to do this. We have, the Aldo and city staff person will collaborate on, will send a request, excuse me, to council staff, and then council staff and city staff will work together to figure out when it will work to have this neighborhood meeting. They will schedule the meeting. The Common Council staff schedules it in Zoom. They will then go through and give all of the information to city staff, and then city staff will take over. The whole point of this is that we're trying to give that, that ownership to city staff so that they're not dependent on city IT staff to do this. Accounts are set up for security and for registration. They've also been pre-approved for recording, and we have set up an automated process to move the recorded meetings to the city's video server from the Zoom cloud account. And IT media team will be holding trainings, and when will they start those? On Wednesday, October 28th. And our goal is to provide training resources and processes so the city staff can be self-sufficient and independent, and they will not need our assistance, IT's assistance, to have a neighborhood meeting. And that's it. Any questions?
Aldo Abas, go ahead.
Hey Sarah, one quick question. In future, are we moving into Teams meeting? Are we changing the platform into Teams?
So Teams are going to be for internal, but they won't be for meetings like this. I think we should continue to do these with, using Zoom.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah.
Aldo Harrington McKinney, go ahead.
Thank you. My, my question, I just wanted to clarify that the, when you say city staff, that does mean like the the council office would coordinate the daytime of the proposed meeting? Is there like a calendar, or they'll do that juggling when that time comes? That's the first question. And the second question, is there a, in this form, is there an expectation of a license that would allow an unlimited number of people to come, or will it be identified, you know, the maximum is? So those are my two questions.
Okay. Good questions. So the first one is, is that the, there is an Outlook calendar for both of those licenses, and council staff will go to them and see if that date and time is available for it. And then if it is available, then they will schedule using that Outlook calendar. The second question of, is it unlimited? I am going to ask Tanya. She's the one who set that up.
Go ahead, Tanya.
Aldo Harrington McKinney, the limit is 500 people.
Thank you, Tanya.
Aldo McKinney, you're muted.
Trying to unmute myself. So the follow-up question, and of course, we don't know how many is always anticipated. So if it's anticipated that it's not going to be 500, there is no additional cost, whether it's 52 or 500, or is there a cost breakdown?
No, if, if it's, if it's 500, then you, if you have 25 people, or if you have 500, it's the same cost for us.
Okay. Thank you. That's my question.
Aldo Foster? Go ahead.
Thank you, and not a question, just wanted to say thanks to Sarah and the team. I think it's a great solution, and I appreciate you guys putting the work into getting it in place for us. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? Well, Sarah, thank you so much for all your work on this. This is going to really help Alders as they do neighborhood meetings, development meetings, and other concerns of our constituents. So I want to thank you again for that. And Tanya?
Yes, thank you, Tanya. Thank you.
And we'll go on to the presentation. And is Matt on? Oh, there's Adam. Oh, there, where's Matt? No, Matt? Okay. Oh, there's Matt. Oh, we got everyone. The floor is yours. You want, Matt, you can unmute, can you unmute yourself? Okay.
Adam's gonna lead the, lead the show.
Okay, Adam.
Great, thank you.
It's all you.
Great, and thank you for the opportunity to share an update from the Funding and Recovery Team with you this evening. I'm here, as you noticed, with Laura Larson and Matt Walker. I'll go ahead and share my screen. You should be able to see the PowerPoint slides. This is what we're hoping is the, the first of a series of quarterly updates to this group about the work that's going on in the Funding and Recovery Team. I'll do a brief introduction to the team, and then turn the floor over to Laura Larson for an update on some of the more specifics that her group has been working on and the exciting developments that they've been, they've been pulling together. So in terms of the, the Funding and Recovery Team, it began, as you're aware, the city mobilized its Emergency Operations Center as in response to COVID to deal with the acute public health emergency that existed. But as the crisis continued to evolve, it became apparent that the, that the ongoing crisis was going to be more than just the immediate public health response, but that there were deep and lasting challenges that would be part of our community, both from economy, from housing, looking at the disparate impacts that COVID-19 has had on the community. So the Funding and Recovery Team was pulled together as a way to coordinate the larger community recovery effort that extends beyond just responding to the immediate public health emergency. It's expected that this team will last through at least 2022. And as, as we're all aware, and as the EOC disparity report highlighted, the pandemic has really exacerbated a lot of the existing inequities that, that already are in our community. So the Funding and Recovery Team was, was developed with six separate sub-teams. There's the Housing Team, Economy and Culture Team, Human Services Team, Transportation and Infrastructure Team, Funding and Coordination Team, and the Government Services Team. And each of these teams are, are working on a particular element of the recovery, whether it's more externally facing, like the Housing Team, and trying to find safe shelter for those who are experiencing homelessness, or looking at something more like the Government Services Team, which is focused on making sure that we're learning from, from what's happening and integrating best practices into the city. All of these teams are coordinated through a larger steering team, where the leads from each of those teams meet every week to make sure that we're continuing to stay aligned as we move forward. Some of these teams are repurposing existing teams, so looking at, at ways that we can take groups of staff that are already meeting and working to, to pivot their work to focus on responding to COVID and that long-term recovery. Some of these teams are brand new, are looking at pulling together staff to try and develop that response. The focus of the overall recovery effort in the short term is to ensure that we're coordinating the prioritization of issues, we're coordinating responses to funding opportunities, and coordinating communications to public officials and the public at large. In the long term, we're really focused on making sure that we're meeting the vision for Madison, that is, our Madison inclusive, innovative, and thriving. So how do we look at not only coming back to where, where we were and restoring what we had, but doing it in a way that's better than it was before, and really building to, to try and focus on that element of being inclusive and making sure that this recovery is inclusive. We're also ensuring that there's a rapid and sustained economic recovery, and trying to focus on a long-term improvement to city operations based on any lessons that have been learned. In your materials, you've got a packet with the quarterly update that goes into more detail about the goals for each of these teams and what's been accomplished so far. And so there are a lot of detail about what's happened so far, and again, we're hoping that we can bring this kind of an update back to you on a, on a quarterly basis with some additional information on what, what, how the, the recovery team continues to work. So that's a brief introduction to the, the team as a whole. You'll probably see, and you've probably already seen a lot of the work happening across, from this team in other venues. So the Government Services and Recovery Team is planning on presenting this evening at Common Council. The Economy and Culture Team will be presenting to the Economic Development Committee on the 21st, and we'll see, the COVID Relief RFP will be coming to this group, we anticipate, in December. And this work is being coordinated across multiple committees and boards that, that touch these areas specifically. And so Alders will continue to see this work coming through, that's all being coordinated through this recovery structure. So let me, let me pause here before turning over the floor to Laura. Are there any general questions about the recovery team? Let me go ahead then and turn the floor over to Laura Larson.
Great, thank you, Adam. So I've been working with the Funding and Recovery Team as part of this structure, and so we've really been charged with two things. Number one, really making sure that the city is maximizing any state or federal dollars that are available to help us navigate our response to the pandemic, as well as recovery efforts that we're trying to stand up. We've also been focused on building lasting infrastructure to do more in the way of grant research, so that as new opportunities come online, we're able to sync those opportunities up with, with various programs that are falling into other teams. But we've also been working on deploying a COVID recovery dashboard, which is tracking 50-plus indicators across nine categories to help serve as the barometer for how our community is faring during the pandemic. So work on the dashboard began back in April and was really born out of hearing, sitting through different meetings and hearing folks report out on different indicators, sort of day by day or week by week, but with, with little context. And so what we did was we worked with stakeholders from across the organization in order to brainstorm what sort of things do we need to be tracking to know what's happening in our community on a regular basis as we sort of gear up for this multi-year recovery. So that has resulted in the COVID recovery dashboard that will, has been deployed internally to staff since about Labor Day, but will get deployed publicly for residents on Thursday morning and will be part of the mayor's press availability. So I want, what I wanted to do tonight is just show you what the dashboard looks like, how you can interact with it, and then just talk a little bit more about, about what it is and, and sort of how, how folks can, can access it. So again, let me just share my screen here. So this is the, the dashboard. Again, this will be, right now is living on the Employee Net COVID Coronavirus website, but we'll be moving to the public-facing Coronavirus City website, like I said, on Thursday morning. And so when you come to the website, you can see that we have these nine different categories of indicators. And if you click on any of these indicators, you can, you can explore some additional data about this information. So one, one area that's interesting to highlight is in Art and Culture. So one of the things that we've been tracking are Manona Terrace bookings, both for 2020 in relation to how that compares to 2019, but we're also, we've also been looking at what future bookings look like. And so one interesting thing that we saw as we updated the data this month is, is we're looking at this chart up here. It's looking at bookings at Manona Terrace for the current year, looking out one year, and then looking out two years. And so if you look at the current year, the, the 2020 bookings are 166 compared to 519 a year ago. If we look a year out, so at this point in time, a year ago, in 2019, there were 204 events booked for 2020. This year, there's 150 events booked for 2021. Now, what's interesting is that earlier in the pandemic, the 2020 number was actually much, much closer to what we were seeing previously. And so this is just an interesting thing for us to keep, to keep in mind in regards to what that will look like, especially for 2020, because what this is sort of indicating is that people's level of optimism about getting back to normal next year is, is starting to fade compared, compared to what we were previously seeing. I'll just demo one more dashboard, or oops, I hit the wrong button. So just demo one more quickly. It does load faster when you're not sharing your screen in Zoom. So, so one more item, just to highlight. In the economy space, we're tracking a lot of different things. We're tracking sales tax data from DOR, property tax information, delinquency on property tax. But one thing that's really interesting, outstanding water bills, so this is the municipal services bill. And so the yellow line here is 2019, the green line is 2020, and this is actually a surprising finding, because because since the pandemic has started, we had, we would, we were expecting to see that the 2020 delinquencies for the municipal services bill would be much higher than what we had seen in prior years. And actually, what you can see here is that it's actually been much lower. So for example, in 2019, the outstanding delinquencies was 2.9 million compared to a million and a half in 2020. So that's just a good case where maybe our instincts about what's happening in the community, this really kind of serves to, to be a barometer, to let us know kind of how things are faring. One other resource I want to make you aware of is that on a monthly basis, the dash, we will release a monthly digest summarizing what's, some major changes that have happened across these 50 indicators. What I'm showing you here is the October Digest that will be released on, on Thursday morning as part of the public release. And so what we're really doing here within each of the nine categories is just giving a high-level summary of, of what's really changed. This, these reports will live with the dashboard on that Coronavirus City of Madison website, and it's something that you can link to and, and share from as well with your constituents. So again, we just wanted to make, make you aware of the work that's been happening in this space and, and what this resource will look like. There's a lot of information there. We will continue to, to update these indicators as new data becomes available, and are certainly available to answer any questions about what the data is telling us, or, or just about the project in general.
Thank you, Laura, and thank you for, for sharing that out. Again, thank you for, for giving us the opportunity to provide a brief update. We're hoping to come back on a quarterly basis to share of a general overview and a deep dive on other subjects that, that we hope that the Alders find interesting. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
I do have a question.
Aldo McKinney have a question. Aldo, President Carter, you're, you're, you're muted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. And so after we get an opportunity to just navigate that and determine what works and questions that we have, we just get in touch with you, Laura, because we haven't really navigated that agenda, and I'm sure that there will be que, I'm sure that I will have questions related to really how to navigate that and feel comfortable with it before your next quarterly report.
Yes, in regards to the dashboard, feel free to reach out to me, and I can, you know, talk with individuals, talk with Alders one-on-one about everything that's in there. And what I'll do is I'll, I'll provide the Alders with the link to where the dashboard currently is on the Employee Net page, because you can all access it from, from its current home internally.
Excellent. And so there is no documentation, accounting that accompany that? You'll just know how to navigate it, and it's a system that'll be easy to, to come to, adjust to and use, correct?
It's, it's intended to be an, an easy tool for folks to interact with. All of the data sources that are utilized to populate the different visuals are cited. There's an info button with each of the different visuals, so that tells you where we're getting our information. It also tells you the last time that it was updated.
Excellent, thank you.
And Laura, since we have you unmuted, the dashboard will be housed on the COVID website, correct?
That's right.
I mean, the digest.
Yes, everything will be housed in one location, and Thursday morning after all of that goes live, I can follow up and make sure that Alders know where to access that information.
Okay, great. Are there any other questions? For the team? Well, thank you very much for this. This is, I appreciate your hard work on, on designing this. Thank you. Okay, great. So on referral from the Common Council, item seven, I am told that, well, I guess I should get a motion. I'm told that they wanted to move this to a different meeting. Can I get a motion on that? Aldo Hennig?
So moved to the December 1st meeting.
To the December 1st meeting, correct. And a second?
Second.
Okay, great. President Carter?
We do have a registrant.
Is this the one we have a registrant on?
Yes.
Let's do that first, then.
We have Lori Schwartz. Lori, you should be unmuted.
Thank you. I'm sorry, could you, I was listening and I had my grand, 16-month-old granddaughter in the background. What?
That's okay.
Thank you. Can you please tell me the item that I'm, I'm referencing, because I signed up to speak to a different one as well at the Common Council meeting. I'm sorry. Is this 62393?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you so much. I, I signed up to speak because it's part of my commitment out of an anti-racism group that I am very proud of working with, that involves the Northside Planning Council. My name is Lori Schwartz. I'm a resident of the City of Madison. I have a multiracial, multicultural family, and I've watched as, I, as a person of privilege, despite being gay, and all of my life can, are you able to see me? I, I have my video available.
Okay. Go ahead, Stefan. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I was, I was just gonna, yeah, echo that. Lori, we don't allow public participants to show their video, just for privacy reasons.
Okay, okay. I was willing, so that's why I asked. So as a, as a resident, I, I want to start attending meetings and speaking to things that I feel I can lend my voice of privilege as a white woman, and as a beneficiary of an unjust society that has ideal goals of its constitution, but has not lived them, and in fact, has ignored the disparaging of many people and the murder of many people. I say this cautiously because I also served as a Madison police officer for 27 and a half years. And I believe, I want us to stop disparaging individuals and get to win-win situations where people who have a very, much a right to be enraged and angry and lift their voices. And I want to lend my voice to them as a person who respects the many, many people in government and professions such as police work, who are every day making the choices and living their lives to try to make that difference. But we, as a society, have to change, because it's not been working. And so in my opinion, I want to speak to where we spend our money. And rather than, in the Madison Starlings where I run and teach volleyball, rather than speak to what we should not do, which is not what anybody who wants a kid to learn the things to do in parenting, in sports, in anything, we should speak to what we want. So I don't want to say to defund the police. I want to say, fund the things that we have not funded and who've led us to incarcerate people without support. Let us look at the practices and decisions of all levels of management, from the police department to everywhere, to say, we should not be enforcing crack cocaine when we don't enforce powder cocaine. That is a, a decision that's at a level that continues to perpetuate the cycles that we have. So I ask, please, I don't have a side on a particular topic here, except to, if we, if we are going to enforce homeless populations, then I ask that we do it fairly across the city. And not, everybody says they don't want somebody next to them. And it's like, I will start by saying, put them in my neighborhood. Put homeless people next to the police department where there's 24 work, and that we should be encouraging and supporting our neighbors. We should go down the street and, and support our neighbors. So in regards to this particular topic, I don't have a pro or an anti stance. I feel that we can do better as a society. I feel that we, of privilege, need to not do what has been, turn and look the other way, not draw red lines where people can be or can't be, whether it's based on the color of skin or the nature of being homeless. I want to do what I can, and I'm willing to say it stands, it starts with me. And I am a taxpayer here, and, and raising children who do not look like me and who, every day, I see the disparities. And I want our country to do better. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm also happy to answer any questions if there's any, I guess, confusion about what I'm saying. I believe that we can find win-win situations where those in privilege give up what they think is fear of a loss of safety, when in fact, we all need to be safe. And we can do better. I'm, I run the Madison Starlings organization, which focuses on youth who do not, especially minority girls who do not have access to sports. I am not representing them. I'm speaking on behalf of the work that I see able to do since I've been retired from the police department, and want us to be driven to find solutions like Safe Harbor. Safe Harbor was the answer to the way we did not serve in child abuse. And we can be served better by systems, learning from each other, and being forced to work together, and to not be focused on just throwing people away, but finding ways to learn from each other. If I've gone over my three minutes, I apologize.
Thank you, Lori. Are there any questions for Lori? Thank you for your comments, Lori. So now we'll go back to, I believe, Alder Hennig. Do you move to re-refer to the December 1st CCEC meeting? And if I remember correctly, Alder Abbas, you second? Okay. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Seeing no hands for objection, I would like to record a unanimous vote for approving the re-referral. Thank you. While we're down to future agenda items, I just want you to know that we did get a confirmation that Public Health Violence Prevention Unit will be presenting on November 17th. I also want you to know that we have received six applications so far for District 7, and that deadline is tomorrow by 4:30. So if you know anyone else who wants to apply for that, they need to get it in by 4:30. Are there any, any other announcements? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion. Alder Hennig?
Over, chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I see no objections, so I will record a unanimous vote for adjournment. Thank you, everybody.